Good morning, welcome to the Marquette City Commission special meeting for Tuesday, September 18th, 2012. Could you please, actually, City Clerk, do you want to call Roll?
Yes, Your Honor. Mayor Protam DePietro.
Yeah.
Commissioner Neme.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Commissioner Sananj.
Commissioner Snyder.
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse.
Here.
And Mayor Kivola.
Here. And could we have a motion to excuse the two Commissioners that may be coming? Commissioner Snyder?
I move that we excuse Commissioner Neme and Commissioner Sananj from this meeting.
Thank you. Do I have support?
Support.
All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. Could you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any changes to the agenda? If not, we will look for a motion. Commissioner Ryan?
Move the agenda be approved.
Thank you.
Support.
Commissioner DePietro supports. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? I don't have any announcements this morning, being that we have nobody here from the public. We do have a public comment period, but I don't see anyone here to address us. So we will move to the consent agenda, which is approval of the minutes from the September 10th, 2012 Commission regular meeting. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Move to accept the consent agenda as written.
Thank you. Do we have support? Commissioner Ryan supports. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? All right, we'll move to new business. Number two, Department of Natural Resources Trust Fund. City Clerk, do you want to read the background?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. At its March 26, 2012, meeting, the City Commission approved a grant application to the Michigan Department of Natural Resources Trust Fund, MDNR. The grant is to fund a permanent restroom facility at McCarty's Cove with an estimated cost of $1,200, split 25% local and 75% state funding. Recently, the city received initial comments from the MDNR regarding its application. The state suggested increasing the local match by 1% from 25% to 20%, 26% local match, equal to $1,200, which will improve the competitive consideration. Therefore, staff believes increasing the local match would greatly improve probability of a successful award. Because the application was submitted in accordance with the Commission resolution, any amendments or changes must also result from Commission approval. Fiscal effect, in the event of a successful conclusion and an additional $1,200, excuse me, an additional $1,200 from the general fund will be needed. The city chief financial officer has confirmed funding would be available to support the potential award. Recommendation, approve the resolution for the Michigan Department of Natural Resources Trust Fund, increasing the local match from, or to, 26% alternatives as determined by the Commission.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Commissioner Ryan?
I'd like to move we approve the recommendation, an increase from 25 to 26% on the match for this grant.
Thank you.
Support.
Commissioner DePietro supports. Commissioner Ryan, any conversation?
I believe this is a very important project. We've designated McCarty's Cove as one of our main swimming beaches. We don't have permanent restroom facilities there now that are working, and I think this is a very good project.
Thank you. Commissioner DePietro?
Nothing further, thank you.
Any other comments? All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? Motion carries. Next up is discussion on County Road 595. City Manager, I'll let you maybe frame this a little bit.
Thank you, Your Honor. Really, we'd hope to tee this up. There's been a lot of different activity subsequent to the statement that we made at the EPA in August, and so we thought we'd, in general, just try to take an opportunity to give the Commission current status of where we believe all the effort has been. In addition to the statements EPA made, that they were hoping to get a decision as early as October, it's our understanding that they collected a lot of feedback, and that might delay their decision. Subsequent to the meeting, Rio Tinto announced and has started to conduct town hall meetings on their mining plan, which include now creating an independent partnership with the Superior Watershed Partnership, and so we've asked Mr. Lindquist from that organization to come in and give you a sense of exactly what that will entail. We also can take some time at the end to have a bit of discussion from the Commission about the other points that we raised in our official statement, and staff will be seeking guidance and perspective from those statements for how we move forward from here.
All right, thank you. Mr. Lindquist, you want to come up to the lectern and... Good morning.
Good morning. So I have a few handouts here. So, the background on this is roughly six months ago, we heard that Rio Tinto was looking at independent monitoring, and after some initial meetings, we, you know, proposed that this should be locally driven. And so for the past six months, we've been negotiating this with Rio Tinto and the Community Foundation as the intermediary kind of fiscal agent on this. And, it's not my phone. And, you know, it just got announced, but it's taken a lot of work. The points that where we were holding firm, such as, you know, completely independent, and that we can monitor what we want, when we want, some of those points, they're now saying, those, the points where they kind of push back the hardest, and were least willing to accommodate, now they're holding them up as like an industry model, that they say this has never been done before globally, that they've never given money to have an independent community organization monitor their work. So, from what my board can tell, that's true. It's, the way this thing is structured, it's independent, and it's unprecedented. And so, this is, I like to be here today because this is exactly what it's all about, that we have already started designing what we're going to monitor. Air quality is going to be first because Powell Township, one of the first things, because Powell Township has been requesting that. But groundwater, surface water, some of the obvious things, we're going to be monitoring. We're going to be replicating some of their monitoring, but we're also going to be doing additional monitoring that we feel is necessary, that Rio Tinto isn't required to do by the state or EPA. But the most important component to me is that the community, anybody from the public can recommend additional monitoring. And, you know, we just announced this last week, and we're already starting to get comments, such as, being here today, you know, we could talk about what the city would like to monitor if the truck route comes through the city. But, heard a few things from the tribe on things they'd like to see monitored that are not monitored yet, and a few comments already from just individuals. So, it doesn't mean everything can get monitored, because it's, you know, it's still, that budget is not going to allow everything to get monitored. But, we're going to prioritize, it has to be science-based, and I see possibilities as you, you know, I'd like to hear what you're considering if the truck route does come through here, through the city. From what I've been told, I think Bill alluded to it, if they don't, if Rio Tinto doesn't get an answer from EPA soon, they say October, then the clock is going to run out on the 595 option, and it will fall to the city route. So, pretty soon, they're going to make that decision one way or the other, because they're going to run out of time to, you know, design, let contracts, and start building 595. So, I think this diagram's pretty self-explanatory, but I will mention a couple of things. So, just got announced last week, the ad just went in the paper for the Independent Oversight Board, that the Community Foundation is setting up. So, we have one member with environmental experience, one with mining experience, hopefully somebody from the tribe agrees to serve on that board, and then one member from the general public, and a member from the Community Foundation. That's the Oversight Board, we submit invoices to them, they pay them, as long as, you know, everybody agrees. Rio Tinto has, you know, no control over that board. If we have a dispute with Rio Tinto, that board has the final say in resolving any dispute, whether it's about data or whatever it is. So, that's another way that independence is there. It's not like we're directly answering to Rio Tinto, we answer to that board. The other thing you'll see on here is, yes, right now it's being funded primarily through Rio Tinto to this board, then down to us to do the monitoring, but we're leaving open the possibility of third-party funding, and we hope we get that from a, we're looking at some foundations, to make it even more independent. We don't want this solely funded by Rio Tinto. So, that's how that works. There were some frequently asked questions, and then if you haven't seen it already, these are the trucks they're proposing. I asked about those covers, and right now, they say they don't know if that's going to be a hard cover, a metal cover, a fiberglass cover, or a soft cover. But, whatever it is, they say that the issue of fugitive dust is not a concern, in their opinion. Other than that, the only other thing I would mention, in my notes, that these are side dumping units, that was interesting, and that the ore would be basketball-sized ore, so not a real fine ore that's being hauled. And I think you're well aware of the number of trucks they're talking about. And, I'll leave it at that for now. I don't know if you have any questions about what could be monitored, but basically, it's wide open. It should be environmental monitoring in some way, but other than that, it's pretty open.
Sure. Johnny?
Thank you, Your Honor. Carl, looking at these, the trailer and the pup behind it, did you have any information on the weight per trailer that the material would be in these trailers?
The only thing I have in my notes is that they only plan to fill them one-third full, because the ore is so heavy that they couldn't fill them up, and for safety reasons, I guess, but they'd be one-third full, and I guess that would be similar to the weight that other trucks are hauling, like the CCI limestone and those trucks.
Okay, I was hoping that we had some weight issues on this.
I could find out for you.
Could you do that and present it to the Commission, please, and the City Manager?
Carl, I've got a few other questions for you as well. I had the chance to look at Rio's original RFP when they were looking for community-based third-party testing. And there was, even though the language was being used, that it would be independent and autonomous, it sounds like that has changed quite a bit into the current relationship that you and the MCCF now have with them. And I'm wondering if that's something that city residents can find somewhere easily, or if you could provide that, so that residents can kind of identify, you know, even though the money may be flowing, is there real autonomy, or is there not? You know, what is the relationship there? Is that available publicly right now?
Yeah, it's on our website.
Okay.
So, all those documents are there, and from what it was originally proposed at, it's more independent. I mean, it's totally independent, in my opinion, you know. So, that's where that's at. But it's all, all those agreements are unique, because we started from scratch. So whatever was originally out there was an RFP, they were going to float around, and we haven't used that at all. We started from scratch and developed our own contract. Thankfully, we have an environmental attorney on our board, who's been able to do a lot of that work pro bono. But, the final agreement, we also decided it would be in plain English. It's not, there's very little legal language in it, except for the liability part. Everything else is designed for the average person to just be able to read and understand. So all those documents are on there. There's our agreement, and then there's a separate one for the Community Foundation, that's the funding agreement.
Okay. Now, my next question would be, out of the comments that you're hearing from people about the things that they would like tested and monitored, that maybe were not in your original plan, have any of those pertain to what's going on in the city?
No, but it was just announced last week, so we haven't heard much.
Okay.
But we've heard a few things already, so that's a good sign. And I think the more the word gets out on this, the more we'll hear. So, hopefully.
Thank you.
Carl, can things like noise and vibrations and smells be looked into as far, you know, you've got air quality, groundwater?
Yep, that would be the fall under the environmental umbrella. So, you know, there's noise pollution, there's air quality is something. Some of these would be tough to monitor when you consider the other truck traffic, but it could be done.
Thank you, Your Honor. We were hoping to get a sense of the Commission today on exactly the interest in having staff work with Carl to determine what type of monitoring we'd like to see for the potential route segment through the city. In our official statement, we'd mentioned the air and water monitoring, and wanting to make sure that we had appropriate testing and oversight in place for things like the river crossing at 550, that we have our storm sewers that might potentially collect some of the non-point source solution monitored through the city. But ambient issues, the sound, the vibrations, the heat, the aroma, is all part of that. With this agreement, recognizing what the Commission has said in the past, it would be staff's view that it would make sense to go ahead and maybe start laying out a tentative plan with the Superior Watershed Partnership to address any potential issues that might come up from the city segment. Even in the event that the route ultimately doesn't come through the city of Marquette, we don't believe that collecting that kind of data would necessarily be a bad thing. So, perhaps if we could get a clear sense of the Commission from that, that would give us the leeway we need to sit down and start talking to Carl about what we'd recommend.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
What kind of output can we expect in general from this process, you know?
Uh...
What kind of reports will you be issuing, or how will this, how will this process work?
Well, depending on what you're monitoring for, first, the best thing to have is baseline data. So what's the current condition, you know, of the, you know, water quality, air, and what are the current noise levels, et cetera. And then, once, I, in this case, it's not a matter of once production starts, because from what I've been told, there's more truck traffic now than there would be when ore production starts during the construction phase. They think there's actually been more truck traffic now. But regardless, as soon as possible, you want to start getting your baseline data of what you're going to monitor, so you can document any changes, and then just report on that. For each one, there's a different protocol, you know. And so, some of this, we have expertise in, and some of it we don't, so that's another thing that's built in. If we don't have the expertise, we can use that funding to contract with, you know, a firm that does, or university, et cetera.
Well, taking it out of the city context for a minute, just to kind of get a picture of, you know, air pollution, or whatever you might be looking at, I mean, do you envision issuing regular reports, alerts, raising issues?
Yeah, I see where you're going. So, yeah, all of the monitoring, we intend to share that data online, so it's all there. Our monitoring, their monitoring. Anytime there's an exceedance above any state-approved threshold, that would be highlighted. And again, that's something we had to negotiate hard on. So, in the city's case, you know, it'd be just regular updates. Like, some of this, we monitor quarterly, some of it, again, we'd have to look into, some of it would be annually, some of it could be more frequently than that, like the noise monitoring. So, everything's different when it comes to monitoring. But we, that is one thing, that all that data would be public. So, if we did monitoring for the city, yes, you'd get copies of it, but it would also be there for anybody to look at on the website. And there are going to be some public meetings to just, that we will hold, to just get more input. So, Marquette, Big Bay, Michigami, et cetera. Another way for people to provide input, but we can give them updates on what we're finding.
I guess just looking at the issues raised by the manager, most monitoring, as you mentioned, has to be measured against some kind of baseline. And so, as you also point out, that might be difficult in the case of some of the issues related to transportation, since what is it we're measuring, and against what?
Right.
Do you have any thoughts on that?
Well, the water quality is something we do a lot, you know. It's good to just go and get that, both chemical and physical, you know, what's the condition of the stream, and, you know, what's the, what are we finding in the water now. But, yeah, noise monitoring, we've never done it, so we would probably be contracting that out. And I, you know, think about, how would you design that? I don't know. With the current truck traffic, we'd have to look into that. But I, we have a green light now, so I mean, we could start doing that immediately, if you decide that's something you want to pursue. Some of this we have to juggle against, you know, costs with the other monitoring we have to do. But I think to get some of this baseline data is, it would make sense. So, no matter what comes down the road, you at least have it. And I don't think the cost would be that, you know, that extravagant to get some of the baseline data.
I'm, you know, I'm certainly supportive of the city working with your group to achieve some of these things, and to get this information, if for no other reason than, you know, just a baseline analysis of where we are. But, you know, this Commission has been very clear through the past two years, that these routes through the city of Marquette are not an option. And we do control these roads through the city. They're not state roads or federal roads, they're roads controlled by us. So, you know, I heard the comment a couple of times, if the truck routes do come through Marquette. At this point, I don't think this Commission has said that's an option yet. You know, we need to be cognizant of every potential option out there, and I think this helps us with that. But, we've been firm supporters of 595, and we're going to keep pushing that route.
Yep. That's fine. I didn't mean to misspeak. I don't, the, actually, you know, haven't followed the road issue as closely as you have, so it is going to be one of the tougher things for us to monitor. But whatever happens, you know, we're happy to, whatever route it goes, you know. And I, that alternate route that, what is it, well, the Fly Ash Route, isn't that, is that a possibility?
I don't know if it is or not. That's one that they're looking at.
Yeah. So...
Commissioner DePietro?
Thank you. I'm just looking at the big picture. I'm not going to say that this is going to happen, that they will come through the city, but if they are, start to come through the city, I want the city to be prepared. And, I don't know- through the city, I want the city to be prepared. And I don't know if you know the answer to, I got like three questions, and looking at the lengths of those trailers, do you have any, how many feet per trailer they are?
Well, all I know is they say those are 65 feet long.
You mean, both of them combined?
Yeah.
Because we got intersections that really wouldn't handle that kind of truck traffic, and that's why I want to kind of look at the big picture with my fellow commissioners and see what, how we're going to prepare for it. And then, you had mentioned about trips daily from the mine. Did you have any, like around 40, maybe 50 trips per day?
Well, in my notes, I have 100 trucks a day, potentially, and that, you know, they could send them in tandem, like two at a time, so, you know, to break up the traffic, and time them to avoid, you know, like school or rush hour, whatever we have, peak traffic times. But I keep hearing 100 trucks a day.
So, they couldn't just run it then during the daytime, if they're going to run that many and stagger them? So, they would probably have to be looking at evening runs?
I think so, but I'm...
I'm just asking, just...
Yeah, that's my understanding.
But if you do find out anything, could you notify the city manager?
Sure.
And my fellow commissioners on this information?
I'm happy to, you know, follow up and get whatever information you'd like, because I mean, that's part of gathering baseline data. We need to know more of what they're considering, and that would help us design any monitoring study or a contractor. So, we need to know...
Because we have, we have a lot of health and safety issues and concerns, and that's why we would like to be prepared in case things don't happen with the first proposal. So, okay, I'll turn it over to the mayor, thank you.
Commissioner Ryan?
I don't want to start a debate with the mayor at this point, but just, when you say this commission has opposed the trucks coming through the city of Marquette, I don't think we've taken any official action on that. I've worked as hard as anybody to try to get the 595 option, but it's my, my understanding of the law is, they have the right to go through the city. We don't have to give them that right. And we would have to take specific action to deny them that right.
Correct.
I don't know if our city attorney is listening, but I guess I'd just like to make sure that is the case. I mean, as any company, they have the right to come through the city as it presently stands.
I was listening, and staying out of the debate for the reasons that I've already emailed to you, you know my, where I stand on that.
Right, I'm just asking...
But as a general practical matter, unless we've got a restriction on truck traffic like we do on certain streets in the city of Marquette already, most commercial and residential traffic can go through our streets.
So it would take specific action of some kind to change that?
That's what we've done in the past, and I would think we would do that again.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
I make a motion, please. I will motion that the city manager explore all options to monitor all environmental aspects of the mine haul traffic, including environmental monitoring as it applies to the route in question, and to include potentially preventing the use of city streets for mine hauling. In other words, my intention is to give the city manager full authority to explore all of the options as it pertains to monitoring environmental traffic going through the city as relating to the mine haul operation, and to explore what options the city can take to prevent the trucks from going through the city. So it's a two-phase motion here. And again, it does not imply that this commission will do this or will do the other, but simply allows us to try and get the best information we can on what the problems are.
All right, thank you. Do we have a second?
Support.
Thank you. Any additional discussion, Commissioner Stonehouse?
Well, the only discussion, again, is that, you know, as Commissioner Ryan pointed out, we have not taken a stand on that in terms of passing an actual motion that says no. And as the lawyer so indicated, the company does at this point have the right of doing so. We should see exactly what we can and cannot do to prevent the traffic through the city, and that would give us some ability then at some point to make a decision on it if we so choose. At the same time, it's very important, I think, as Ms. Lindquist has pointed out, to gather the applicable environmental information so we know what to monitor and how to do it if in the event they are indeed coming through the city.
Thank you. Commissioner Schneider?
Well, most of what I would say would be mimicking Commissioner Stonehouse's comments. You know, I think it's wise that if we support it, that we're giving direction to our city staff to be able to move forward on this and come back with some recommendations and some more information, you know, depending on the action that we want to take. The only thing that I would encourage staff on is I know that primarily we're looking at the route coming in on Sugarloaf and going out on Wright Street, but if there's any other, any other routes that go through the city that they may take, I would assume that the city staff will be looking into baseline monitoring that as well. That wasn't mentioned, so I just wanted to add it, though I'm sure it will be included.
Thank you. Any other comment? Seeing none, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Thank you, Carl.
Yep.
Now to public comment. Comments should be limited to five minutes per person, seeing nobody else out there. We'll move to comments from city commissioners. Commissioner Schneider?
Is there any way we can move our commission meetings to eight in the morning all the time? This is really nice. That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner DePietro?
Nothing at this time, Your Honor.
Commissioner Ryan?
Nothing further.
Commissioner Stonehouse? Can I have nothing as well? City manager, anything you'd like to add?
No, I'd just like to thank the commission for the clarity they've provided.
All right, thank you. With that, we're adjourned.